I have six thirty. Anybody else just want to sign the citizens' comment? Other than the ones that want to talk about the ordinance, the ordinance will be done in the public hearing.
I believe there's two more minutes or at least 15 seconds to sign in.
Okay, take a stand.
Do you want to sign in? Do you want to sign in?
I'll sign in.
Six thirty is down this year. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have the notification back house, woman in name, Lee.
Praise. O gracious father, I thank you for our existence in this day. Thank you for your grace you have given us. Thank you for the grace you are giving us and will give us. I come humbly before you this evening, asking for your intervention in all of the decisions that will be made at this council meeting. I ask now, Father, for your continued blessings on the mayor and this council, and all the citizens of Darlington. This I ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, that all the people say, amen, amen, and amen.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who voted minutes of February 12th, and the 21st, 2018 council meeting?
The thing I noted was expected for February 21st. It's entitled regular city council meeting, but wasn't that a special conference meeting?
Yes, it was a special meeting, yes.
Probably would just be changed from February to special.
We're going on, um, the February 12th regular meeting and then the, um, special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of February 12th meeting, council meeting?
I vote that we approve the minutes of our February 12th council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, so if I'm voting in the second, we receive the approval of the minutes of February 12th. All in favor, let me know, sign aye.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, what you care. Now I need the approval of the minutes of the, um, special 20th, of February 21st, um, meeting. Can I make a motion?
I'll motion that we approve the February 21st, 2019 special meeting, um, to be amended that way.
I'll second.
If I'm voting in the second, then we see the special meeting of 21st, all in favor, let me know, sign aye. Ladies have the same right, what you care. Okay, number four, I've been asked to move some things. I would ask that, um, upon the seventh seat, that we table that to further discussion. Can I make a motion, do that, make a second?
I'll second. I made a motion. She made a motion.
All in favor, let me know, sign aye.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, what you care. Okay, I have been asked to, um, to move, um, A from the new business, D, the beautification awards up to A, A. Okay, that's it. Okay. You want to move the other one up too?
Make these moves on both before we finish business, since we're, uh, handing out awards and honoring.
What you gonna, what you gonna do?
Before and after number six, before number seven?
After number six, before number seven, both of them?
Yeah, A and A D, yes.
Okay, okay. A, A, okay.
And A D.
You understand that?
Yes.
Move A and A D up. Okay. May I get a approval of the meeting agenda for tonight? Make a motion?
I made the motion that we approved amended agenda. I isn't amended, I've just changed.
All in favor? What you gonna say?
Yes.
Second, um, council meeting. All in favor, let me know, sign aye.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, what you care. Okay, number five, the report of outstanding committees, DDRAs, Mr. Rob.
Thank you, mayor and council, for giving us this time to speak with you and let you know about our activities. Um, the annual taste of Darlington is going to be held Thursday, April 11th at the Track Two Tough to Tame from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the infield garage area. We're expect, accepting grillers, table hosts, and sponsors for this fabulous evening of food and fun. So far, attendees will have a host of delicious food to sample, including a taco bar, frog legs, desserts galore, beef jerky, and more. Tickets are $30 in advance and $35 at the gate. We will even have a silent auction of a hand painted rain barrel dedicated to our first responders and servicemen and women that night. Also in April, the DDRAs annual golf tournament will be held on Wednesday, April 3rd, at Darlington Country Club, sponsored by Carolina Bank, Darlington Raceway, Fitness World Gyms, and Nationwide Insurance. This four man's captain choice tournament includes mulligans, a lunch buffet, and prizes. Teams are $240, with a limited number of spots available. Our next bringing downtown a lot concert committee meeting will be this Thursday at 6:00 at Mom Mia's Italian Kitchen. It was previously scheduled the same night as that special council meeting, so we had to move it. Anyone who's interested in helping with these events is encouraged to attend, and there will be pizza. Businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches are invited to join the DDRAs as members. We recently welcomed the Free Medical Clinic and their new executive director, Mr. Stephen Edward, to our group this month. Members can give us a call or send us an email, and we'll feature their news, employee recognition, sales, new products, special hours, and other events, with people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers, through our text and email news alerts, which you can sign up for on our website, www.builtupdarlington.org. Memberships are $150 for most businesses, $100 for civic groups, churches, and nonprofits, and $50 for individuals. And you can download the application again at our website, builtupdarlington.org, and you can also sign up to get the messages on your phone. The DDRAs also invites businesses to network and learn about the DDRAs programs and give feedback for our future projects at our monthly members breakfast at 8:00 a.m., Wednesday, March 27th, at Taki's Diner. Breakfast will be provided for member businesses at no charge. Non-members who'd like to attend are welcome for a nominal donation of $5 per person to go towards the meal. And those meetings will be held on the last Wednesday of every month at 8:00 through October.
When you say most businesses, when you saying, you said most businesses?
Um, when I say most, it's most small businesses. If you're a, a big industry or a bank, it's, it's more.
Okay, I thought you tried to say, that's all right. Anybody see anything? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Harry Potter's not here tonight. Um, number six citizens wish to speak before council. Um, I have, um, five names. If any of these ones want to talk about the ordinance, we ask you to wait until the public hear. So if it's not about the public hearing, um, Mr. Leonard X, you can come on up. But if it's about the public hearing, you wait until the public hear, when the ordinance.
Oh, I can do both.
Is this about the ordinance?
No.
Okay.
If you want me to wait, then I'll just talk about something else right now.
Okay.
Rhonda Brand. She was, uh, awarded the citizen of the year the other night. And, uh, I'd just like everybody to know that she's also a member of the Quonix Club. They, uh, they put it in the paper about she was, uh, on the beautification board, which I think she's done a great job. But I just want everybody to know that she's also a member of the Quonix Club. I was glad to have her. And I'll be back.
Thank you. Leroy Lawrence. Mister Honors, now that you leave this for the citizens, for the, um, the ordinance part, right? Because we were asked that you wait on that, we have a public hearing on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
You just have a mic up.
We have a mic on.
Okay.
Oh, Mister Mads, you, um.
The second. I'll wait, ma'am.
You'll wait, okay. Um, I can't read the next one. What is the next one, Ed? I don't know what it is. Can you make up a guess?
Is that Keel? K.I.E.L. Yes, I'll wait. What's the first name? Andrew. Andrew.
Andrew, okay. Uh, Mister Walter Beck. Is it the same thing?
I will speak on a matter with nothing to do with the ordinance.
That's okay. Okay, that's fine.
Um, first of all, my name's Walter Beck. My wife and I own Backgrown Properties LLC, Back Family Farm LLC, do business here in Darlington. And thank y'all, to y'all that serve on this council and serve as mayor. Y'all are truly in a unique position of authority, and y'all have been called to do the job before y'all. It is truly a calling to do what y'all do, and put yourselves up here on this dais in front of the citizens of Darlington. And for that, I thank y'all for what y'all have to go through and have to deal with. And I pray that we go forward in such a way to move Darlington forward, for Darlington to become what it can be, and not to dwell in the past, and not to dwell in things that may be hurtful or harmful. But I pray for wisdom upon y'all to move this town forward, because this is my hometown, and I love Darlington. And y'all must love it too, to come up here and do what y'all do. So for that, I thank y'all, and I will speak again later on the proposed ordinance. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move the, um, naming of the old Darlington Fire Station. Well, we all know that, uh, Mister Jimstone, former chief, was a remarkable, was a remarkable man, and still is in my eyesight. Um, and we want to name the old cat after him. So, um, at this time, I'm going to yield my rights to Mister Seagull. Councilor Seagull, you want to say something?
Thank you, mayor. This is a tribute to James Casper Stone Jr. Jimstone dedicated 50 years of his life to the City of Darlington Fire Department, including 28 as fire chief. Jimstone was instrumental in the saving and restoration of the City of Darlington's first fire injury, our pad, which now sits on display at the old fire department building on Cashwell Street. Jimstone and the Stone family gave the property at the corner of Public Square and Art Street for the Darlington Veterans Memorial. Chief Stone also led the fundraising drive for the Veterans Memorial. Jimstone was a member of the Darlington County Council for nine years and served six years as Darlington County Council Chairman. Jimstone was an active member of the Darlington community as a lifelong member of the Darlington Warriors Club, Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, and First Baptist Church, where he served many leadership roles in the church. I therefore feel it is appropriate to make a motion to name the old City of Darlington Fire Department for Chief Jimmy Stone.
I'll second that. I'll second it as well.
You mean, okay, who said it? Right, right, okay. So if I'm voting in the second, we name the old cat after, um, former chief Stone? All in favor, let me know, sign aye.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, what you care.
Mayor.
Yes.
One more comment. I further ask that the city council and city chief staff work with the Stone family to officially dedicate the building in Chief Stone's honor.
Okay, we can, um, make a decision, um, when you want to have, we can have it at the old path. We can do it out there, because I'm understanding it. Um, I saw him, he wore the flowers out there, on the path, he kept it going, so I don't know, I guess Doc will have to do it now.
I was going to get you to do it.
Still wrong together, I think they're more than one, so he'll get you to.
He told me to tell you to do it. He told me to tell you to.
He did? I'm going to have to go do it, Chief Stone said that.
Thank y'all so much.
Go ahead.
Mayor, comment though, we're not renaming our pad, we're just going to rename the building.
The building, I mean, I'm sorry, the building, we named the building, yes, the building, not the pad. The pad, I said the pad, because he has something to do with that. Okay, now we decided, right, um, what we gonna have?
Yeah, ma'am, that's up to the family when it's convenient, because they have to get their folks to Kentucky and everywhere. Maybe when it's a little bit.
Thank you.
Soon we can have some refreshments out there, a little party.
Of course, that's how you do it.
Now, I've been asked to, um, the beautification, um, board, want to do something extra, other than what I did for Christmas, um, thanking everybody for all the help that they did for Darlington. Um, I think about all the boards helped, you know, with the Christmas tree, I think everybody was doing downtown. I mean, people came from everywhere looking at our lights downtown, and it was real nice. Um, under the umbrella of the City of Darlington, um, beautification board would like to express extreme gratitude for all those involved with making Christmas in Darlington a little more magical this year. Everyone can attest to that. We thank all who participated in the discussion, developed ideas, contributed funds, and decorated so many corners of the city. Excuse me. And decorated so many corners of the city for the Christmas season. Um, the beautification board, um, want to especially recognize some of the major contributors. Um, DSL Mills, um, delivered the Christmas tree to the square from North Carolina and manufactured it to arrive in time for the Christmas parade. Um, Fitness World, Curtis Boyd along, along with the light up Darlington Christmas Committee, he got lights, um, strung up to the trees around the courthouse. Um, State Farm, our very own Mister Bill Moore, um, built the drum bass for the Christmas tree. Um, Science Plus System donated their staff and trucks to set up and take down the tree. Darlington Fire Department is always, always doing something for the City of Darlington. Didn't have to really ask them, they always volunteer. Our chief back, that Chief Stone, I mean, our, oh, no. Chief Stone, talk to me, Doc. Captain Camidore, Chief Camidore, together with Science Plus, they got the Christmas tree put up and taken down safely, so we're used for next year. At last, at last, we say, but certainly not least, the Darlington's number one award, Darlington Garden Club. Always on the job, anytime of year. They're not just that one time, on the Christmas, they say. He said, to let, they purchased a new tree. I said, purchase the new tree.
All right.
Purchase the new tree. So you know they're doing great things. Um, the new Christmas tree, that was the star of the show, and it was. They invested so much of their time and talent to the city's beautification throughout the year, but the new tree was certainly a crowning achievement for 2018. We want to thank all everybody, but now, at this time, now, I got something to give you from the beautification board.
All right.
Anybody here from DSI? DSI?
All right.
The City of Darlington Beautification Board presents the appreciation award to DSI Mills for their contributions making Christmas night, Christmas magical 2018 for the citizens of Darlington. Looking for the next year now. Fitness World, come on down, Mister Curtis Boyd, where are you? Same thing as this is to Curtis Boyd for his contribution, okay? Thank you. Take your phone down, we don't see it in the picture. Thank you. Come on down, my man. Down on my butt. Get your hair up.
All right.
So we should have helped you with that one, she didn't. What you, come on, Teresa. Thank you. Wait, come on back, come on, all right, all right. Um, Science Plus System. We see you in November, right, put a tree again, and some more stuff, you got some more stuff this time, right? All right. Come on the other side. Put your hand on it.
All right.
Now, committed to come back in November, will we, if you ever spin, right? Oh, my, 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 come on down, girls. Did you find something? Oh, wait, not yet, I'm sorry, girls, I was so, come on down, come on down. Chief Camidore, come on. Come on down. That's all we got. These are my boys here.
All right.
Anything they ask them to do. Now, now this one. You know what, these ladies are remarkable. They are remarkable. When we have cleaned up Darlington, they're there. Anything we ask them to help with, they're there. And not just Christmas time, that's why they get the laundry. Come on down. Every old year long.
Beautification Committee of the Garden Club.
The garden. A little bit of anything, right?
Okay.
I really admire you. All the hard work and work. Unfinished business. Um, the second reading of the ordinance, 2019 dash annexation 164 dash 05 dash 02 dash 046, Lulu Williams, 504 Young Street, right off of Berry Street, down low, mainly, on the annex of the city. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll motion that we, um, pass the second reading ordinance, 2019 dash 02 annexation 164 dash 05 dash 02 dash 046 to Lulu Williams, 504 Young Street.
I'll say.
Okay. It's been properly motioned, second, then we receive the second reading, ordinance 2019 dash 02 annexation 164 dash 05 dash 02 dash 046, Lulu Williams, 504 Young Street. All in favor, let me know, sign aye.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, what you care. Okay, it is now.
How many should we sign?
Okay, we have 30 minutes, we're going to, uh, public, uh, hearing. Mister Leonard X.
I'm glad you all, uh, voted to carry over that second reading, and I hope you keep carrying it on out of the city, because, uh, I don't like it. I think, uh, we should be able to sign up like we did tonight, and, uh, maybe not speak five minutes, maybe three minutes. But, uh, we should not have to go to Howard six days ahead of time to make an appearance before council. I, I should have spoken about the, uh, ball fields, but I can't now, because this is about that one ordinance. So, uh, I am going to say one thing. Tracy, still love you, girl. You still my stepdaughter. So, uh, just, please think about it. It's going to be hard for all of us to get in touch with Howard six days ahead of this meeting. And, uh, there are things that come up from that sixth day until the day of the meeting, or the night of the meeting. And sometimes someone is going to want to say something about what's going on. And so I just think we need to leave it like it is. Yeah, our, uh, professionalism could be better at times, but, uh, and we might drop it down from five to three minutes. But, uh, I don't think we need to have it, we have to go see Howard or sign up with Howard. I don't even know what it's going to be. I don't even know what it's going to be. Do we have to go see him? Do we have to just call him? I don't, I don't know what it's going to be, but I don't like that part of it. I think we should be able to sign up, talk to you all. You're our representatives, and we should be able to talk to you. Yes, sometimes we say things that are a little heated. Well, that's what you get paid for. That's what you get paid a big bucks. Take it in one ear, let it go out the other, but let us have our say-so. Thank you.
Thank you.
My comments will be very similar to previous speakers, a little bit different here and there, but as I read in newspapers about this particular matter, I felt like I needed to come and express my feelings on. You all have a copy of what I'm going to say, and so I'll just start reading here. Ms. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, fellow citizens of Darlington. My name is Reverend Leroy Lowry. I'm a retired minister from Southside Free Will Baptist Church and a citizen of the city of Darlington. I'm a strong believer in the Constitution and the Bill of Rights of our country, and surrounded in that Constitution, the First Ten Amendments are the rights and obligations of the citizens of our nation. The First Amendment guarantees that we Americans, we Americans are freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom of peaceful assembly, and the right to petition our government or redress of grievances. The Constitution also grants to the citizens the right and responsibility to hold our government accountable. Therefore, I've come tonight to speak in opposition to the city ordinance concerning the public's access to the city council in its present form. I believe this ordinance will diminish access to our city government by the citizens of Darlington. Therefore, I offer the following changes to the proposed ordinance. First, the matter of requiring citizens to meet with the city manager six days before the coming session. I hope there will be some changes to this part of the proposal, because there are some of our people who must work during the hours that the city manager works, and therefore they do not have the ability to meet with him personally. I ask the council to allow a phone call or other means of communication with the city manager or his secretary to be sufficient in this matter, or go back to the matter of what our previous speaker said. Also, if a citizen drops by the manager's office on his or her lunch break, the manager may be across town, gone to lunch, or otherwise be absent from his office, and the citizen will not be able to contact him. Second, the six-day requirement may cause some difficulty. If the speaker wants to address an item on the current agenda for that meeting, if the six days are required before the meeting is held and the agenda does not become public until three days before the meeting, then the citizen will be unable to address his or her concern. I ask council to find some way to allow citizens to address an agenda item without the six-day requirement. Third, the three-minute limit is probably sufficient for the average citizen to express his or her concern. However, in unusual situations or unusual issues, I ask that, at the pleasure of council, this time period be made flexible. This flexibility would be on a case-by-case basis. In conclusion, it has been reported that some of our citizens have been involved in personal attacks upon the mayor or members of the council, so I would say that this is not right, or should be avoided by all. It is possible to express our differences without personal attacks. Darlington is a good place to live and rear our children. Let all of us work toward making this a better place for all of our people. If the mayor or members of the council have any questions, or if I have not been clear, I will be pretty glad to answer their inquiries at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Lowry. Dan McManus?
McManus, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Dan McManus, I'm a proud resident of Darlington. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and my wife, Amanda Wood. She is currently working EMS this evening, and she cannot join us. Although we're not disagreeing that the ordinance needs a refreshing, we are disagreeing with the process that was taking place last meeting. At last meeting, the ordinance was read by Mayor Heinz, motioned by Mayor Heinz, and seconded by Councilman Backus. Then Councilman Gardner began the discussion of amending the ordinance. Although this was great discussion, after the discussion was completed, an amendment, amendments were agreed upon, there were not, no new motions to accept the amended version, nor was the amended version read in full. It seems that when the vote was taken, it was the original ordinance and not the amended version that you all discussed. A new ordinance may be needed, but your consistency is needed more. The process that you all have needs to be done and taken very seriously. I know you all are trying, but it needs to be followed, and I think that that's what is hurting you currently, and that's not meant to be meanly, it's just a matter of fact. Additionally, it should be noted that the way of the ordinance is currently written, it does not allow for business owners to voice an opinion about the city matters. If a person owns a business, they pay city taxes. If they own property, they pay city taxes. And this new ordinance is saying, prospective city business owners, we would want to invest in our town, however, we would not want you to have the right to speak. The ordinance does not give a city owner the right to speak if they're not a resident. In my opinion, that is taxation without representation. Thank you.
Key, was it Key, was it Nick?
Keel? Yes.
Hi, good evening, my name is Andrew Keel. I have a consulting firm called Six O Five Holdings. We're actually interested in doing some, purchasing some property here in the Darlington area. Through a couple of different avenues, this idea came to my attention and wanted to address it with you all. Basically, I think it's a foolish and insulting idea that you guys have put before the city council. It's a red flag to outsiders like me, and I understand, yes, I'm an outsider, that are considering this area for future business opportunities. There is a good chance that you guys, the idea that you have concocted is in violation of the First Amendment, which some have already addressed here, but it's also in violation in some areas of these states' open records laws, the sunshine laws, that are designed to let the public see what is going on behind governments' closed doors. I don't know why this particular issue came about. I imagine there's a backstory that involved personal attacks or whatever was going on here, that that's irrelevant. The issue is, this is not right, and it's not the way to do things here. Okay? Limiting the public's comment, even if it's just going through the city manager, seems like the exact opposite thing you guys want to do to make an open and transparent government. You guys are elected leaders, with the word leader being a key piece in that sentence. You're expected to endure some criticism on this body. That's why you guys get paid the big bucks. That's part of being a leader, and I know that's tongue-in-cheek there. If someone tosses a personal attack around the public meeting, I expect you as leaders to have the fortitude to respond to them privately, not publicly, but privately, and discuss it in a private situation, and not hide this, not hide behind your status as an elected official. I applaud your effort tonight to postpone and table this particular motion. I think it needs to be redressed and furthered. I think there are some great concepts that have been brought forth here by the gentleman that spoke before us, and I think there are some good things that you can do with this, but as it stands now, as the ordinance stands now, is not the right way to go about it, and people like me are going to be scared off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city manager. I'm going to begin with a quote. "All we say to America is to be true to what you said on paper. If I lived in China, or even Russia, or any totalitarian country, maybe I could understand some of these illegal injunctions. Maybe I could understand the denial of certain basic First Amendment privileges, because they haven't committed themselves to that over there. But somewhere I read of the freedom of assembly, somewhere I read of the freedom of speech, somewhere I read of the freedom of press, somewhere I read that the greatness of America is the right to protest for rights." I completely stole that. Those are not my words, but I think they are very powerful, and those words were spoke by the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on the evening of April 3rd, 1968, Memphis, Tennessee. The next day, he gave his life for the civil rights movement, for the movement to protect the rights of all people. And folks, I know two minutes may not seem like a lot, and I know signing up six days before may not seem like a big deal, but obviously it is. Obviously, people are upset by this, so I applaud y'all for tabling this. And look, I come up with ideas all the time. Most of them aren't good, okay? And they don't see the light of day, because I go, "Oh, that's an idea, okay, that's a bad idea, I can't do that for A, B, and C." This ordinance as presented, line by line, citizens of Darlington wishing to appear before the council, meet with the city manager six days before a regularly scheduled monthly meeting. What if, what if he's sick? What if he's out of town at a conference? I think that meeting in person with the city manager is unnecessary. It's an unnecessary step to inhibit people's First Amendment rights. Now, I agree, there should be no personal attacks from anybody at this podium on any elected official up here. There should be no personal attacks at all amongst y'all as a body. We need to move forward to make Darlington better, and cutting each other down from this way, or that way, or back and forth doesn't help. I can disagree with you, but I can still respect you as a person. Disagreeing on an issue does not need to divulge into personal attacks, and Madam Mayor, you have the right to remove people that are disordinarily from this meeting the way the law was written. The Freedom of Information Act does not protect people to come up here and attack this council personally, or yourselves, so you already have the means to handle that. I think this ordinance is unnecessary, and I hope that y'all have also heard from your constituents and heard, this isn't a good idea. This is, this is a bad idea that seeks to silence people, and I know that's not what y'all want. Y'all want to cut out the personal attacks. I've watched it online, I've watched the recordings, it's ugly. It's violent. We don't need infighting here. We need to make Darlington better. We need to attract businesses, we need to attract growth, we need to attract jobs, so that people like me who graduated in 2002, 2003, and went off to college, and then they never came back. How many of y'all have kids that left to go to college and didn't come back here? That's sad. I love Darlington. This is home. Please, y'all, I beg y'all, access ordinance and work together. Make Darlington better, make it what it can be. You have Florence right here at your doorstep, y'all have a golden opportunity, you have I-20, I-95. This can be a great place for people to come and live, but fighting and personal attacks, that's the heart of this, I believe. And I'm guessing, I don't know. I'm guessing y'all are sick of it. Y'all are sick of the personal attacks, and y'all don't deserve it. But if people are personally attacking members of this council, boot them out. Boot them out. You're protected by law to do that. Y'all know that. The Municipal Association of South Carolina provides y'all information on how to conduct meetings. You don't need this ordinance, you don't need it. And Mayor, I know that's not what you want to do. I know you don't want to kick citizens out of meetings, but we have got to move forward. And bickering back and forth and cutting each other is not moving Darlington forward. So I beg y'all, please, access ordinance. I beg the citizens of Darlington, please, work with your elected officials to make Darlington better. Stop cutting each other. This has the potential to be a great place to live. This has the potential to be a great place for families to come and move. I don't, people don't need to drive to an office anymore. People can commute online. I can work just as well from downtown Darlington as I can from downtown Charlotte. Make people want to move here. Thank y'all for your time, thank y'all for what you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, everybody. I'm George Knapp, for those of you that don't know me, but I'm pretty sure all of you all know me. Just as, because this is a hearing, I was just curious, show hands if you don't mind, who got my email regarding this ordinance? Okay, I sent it to everybody, because it was on the list, okay? I'm sorry if somebody somehow the email didn't get through, maybe check your spam filter, maybe I'm somehow set up as a spam for somebody. I won't go into why, but just saying. I agree with most of what's been said. I don't know for sure if it's a constitutional issue so much, although I am a defender of the First Amendment, as you all know very well, but I think that the length of notice, I think Howard being a single point of contact, no offense to Howard, but he's a busy person, I'm a busy person, I offered him my email, some alternatives. Again, my ideas aren't the best ideas, you don't have to use my ideas, but I throw them out there as an option. I look forward to this part of the meeting, like I said in my email. I enjoy hearing what the citizens have to say, even when they don't agree with me or I don't agree with them. I'd also worry about things like, if there's going to be an acceptance criteria, are all comers going to be allowed to speak, or is there going to be some kind of filtering? If there is, I think it's absolutely necessary that that filtering is transparent. It's maybe appropriate to filter, but it has to be transparent. You cannot get yourselves in a situation where we think something's going on funny behind closed doors, and why am I not allowed to speak, but she is, or he is, or whatever? Okay? So if you do choose to do some filtering, think it through, okay? That's been a theme, I've been coming to these meetings now, I've been living in town for nine and a half years, I've come to the meetings for probably eight years, on and off, and one of my consistent themes regards to who's been sitting in council or who's been the mayor, has always been, try to do a better job of thinking things through, think about the ramifications of what you do, that's been mentioned several times here by other people, alright? So I think it's okay to throw out ideas out, it's okay to brainstorm, but look, you've got all these people that care. Use us too, use us as a sounding board, okay? And so you don't have to put a resolution out there to get a sounding board, say, "Hey, we want to talk about this." Go out in your communities, knock on some doors, and it's not October before an election, okay? Knock on my door on a, you know, March cold evening, two years before an election, and say, "Hey, what do you think about this?" Okay? How about that? That sounds like a good idea. Alright? The time length, everybody here, we were timing everybody's discussions, the average time was about five minutes, okay? Is it really bogged down in the business of council? Or you guys feel put out? I don't think so. Okay? Three minutes was kind of a compromise. Brian and I spoke before the last meeting, you know, three's better than two, by at least one minute. I think I got that math right, but five would be, five would be good as well. So easier access, transparency, if there is any filtering, is absolutely a must, and give us as much time as you think is appropriate. And as far as the personal attacks, I personally don't believe I've been involved in any, if I have, or if you believe I have, please seek me out, I'm more than willing to have that discussion. I think disagreement and a personal attack are two different things. I think we can agree to disagree, or we can debate issues, but we can do it in a professional and adult manner. And I think every citizen of the city, and every person on council is capable of achieving. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Howard Gorian. I support the ordinance for citizens of parents before council. I think it is necessary that our city government should have such an ordinance as other municipalities have throughout this country. My recommendation would be to model our ordinance around the same form and format that Darlington County is using for their ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know you all know me. I'm Curtis Boyd. Thank you for your moment of time. I wasn't going to speak, but it's kind of like being at church. If you sit back in the back and don't give a testimony, you'll get an opportunity to speak, you gotta speak. I am not a citizen of Darlington. Okay? I'm not a citizen that lives in town yet, but I am. I'm going to move into town. I have purchased a house so that I can run for mayor. But I have been in business, and I have lived here. I spent, I've lived at home 54 years. September will be 55 years. Okay? I run these streets, walk these streets since I was a child. Walked shoes at B.C. Moore's, as I told you once before. I own five pieces of property, as they said earlier. I pay taxes, big taxes, a lot of taxes in the city of Darlington. Okay? For property that is inside the city limits. As this other gentleman spoke a moment ago, but I don't know, it will run business off if they cannot come up here and speak, that they've got to go over and talk to Howard. I hope that Howard's got a lot more to do, and I know Howard's got a lot more to do than talk, advise, sit down, line things up. I do agree with them that there should be no attacks on anyone. Okay? And as they said, all of you have the right, because officers are usually in this place, that if somebody does start attacking you for whatever reason, ask them to leave. Okay? Should be simple as that. The attacks and arguments back and forth, there's a lot more to do in Darlington than what is being taken over for this ordinance. Okay? So as a business owner, okay, that pays taxes and has lived here, and to me, as I talk to a lot of people that say, "I would vote for you, but I live in the county." So I'm going to run for county council, okay? Because I probably get more county council votes. Okay? Because there's a lot of people that live in the county that should be able to come in here and speak. If you want to know, you should want to know what it is that we can make our town better. That is our ultimate goal, so that all of us have a nice place to live, come in here, and that you're proud to say that you're city council, that you're proud to say that you live in the city of Darlington, and that you're hopefully one day to be able to say that you're proud to be a Christian. Okay? Which is what I am most of all. Okay? Proud to be a Christian. But I am very proud to be living in this town, and I would love for anybody to come up and talk to me, call me anytime, 24/7, and I'm not afraid to talk to anybody. Okay? So again, do I please everybody? No. Jesus Christ did not please everybody. People still accuse him and curse him today, and he died for your sins. Okay? So if you can't take it, somebody fussing at you, just simply go. Tell them they're responsible. Okay? Thank you for your time. And again, as a citizen, and we'll be moving into town, and I have businesses, please let people speak. That's all I ask. Okay? Great thing.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Y'all know me. This is...
For the record.
This is a last-minute thing. I know that we're supposed to contact Howard.
Yeah. Statement for the...
Andrea. I know that we're supposed to contact Howard, but like George says, he emailed everybody on council, and the email addresses that he was given, I think Howard gave him, it took two days for Howard to contact him back, and a bunch of y'all then even emailed him back. Not necessarily having to agree with anything that he said, but just a, "We got your email. Thanks, be a ripoff." So if people, not everybody, like somebody else has said before, not everybody gets a lunch break. People might not work in Darlington, they might work in Florence. It takes 20 minutes to get here, to go meet Howard, to put your name down on a list, and then drive back to work. That's your lunch hour basis. Not everybody can make phone calls from work, so you can't call him. If you email him and you don't get a response, how are you supposed to know if your email has been accepted, if your name is on a list? I do think that... I mean, I don't want to think that this would be the case, but like I, you know that I've complained about that building that Curtis Boyd and a bunch of people bought. I complained about that for four years. And I was backwards and backwards and backwards, coming to council meetings, being told, "Yeah, it's been taken care of, it's been taken care of." Howard, somebody, if they had a complaint about something, and they took call Howard to get their name on a list, and then they're told that, so say, for example, if I'd called and said, "Okay, I want to come back to council, I want to talk about this building again," and then I'm told, "No, you're not allowed to speak." That's what people are going to think, unless there's going to be a good reason why you're not allowed to speak.
So you're saying that in reference to the ordinance? I mean, that's what we're talking about, the ordinance, okay?
Yeah. Yeah. The building's barbed. Just doing that. So I'm just saying that people might get the idea that there's a reason why their speech is being quashed. If people, and I do think, I know somebody else said, I can't remember who it was, that if you all don't want to hear our voices, if we get told that we can't speak in the state council, the general consensus from people, from people that I've spoken to, is that you all just don't want complaints to be heard. The thing is, is not many people come to city council meetings. Maybe at the most, three or four people, unless it's a huge thing like the ball field, three or four people get up to speak. That is 15 minutes, 20 minutes per month, and if you all can't accept 15, 20 minutes from people, I don't know what that says. My last point is, if you all don't want to hear what we have to say, again, not many people come to the council meetings. A lot of city people read the newspaper. A lot of city people are on Facebook. If the voices are not heard here, where we know that you're going to take into consideration what we're saying, everybody's going to go to Facebook, everybody's going to go to newspaper, and you won't be able to respond where, do you know what I'm saying? So three minutes, I think, is good. Prefer five, but three minutes is good. The whole six days, that's just so pointless. Like everybody else has said, if you don't like what somebody's saying, if somebody's getting aggressive, kick them out. Probably wanted to kick me out before, but you have the opportunity to do that. So the general consensus from people, like I said, are my friends, is that you're just trying to silence the voices, and it's the wrong impression that people are getting what I think, because I don't think you want to do that. I think a couple of people have said things that you don't want to hear, and that's why this is what's happened. So three minutes, no six days, and no personal attacks, absolutely. I think everybody agrees with that. But I just think it's something that you all come up with in a rushed judgment, and you haven't really thought about what you want to do. And I'm glad that you're reassessing the...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, y'all, if you want minutes before the gentleman, that starts it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Bill Moore. I'm a resident of Darlington for 20 years now. Businessperson in Darlington, I'm a business building property. I just want to state I'm against this new ordinance. I came here to be able to sign up and come here and address you members formally here at the council meeting, it is a pleasure. It's America, it's what we're about. You know, I'm not talking of competition there, I'm just talking, if you limit it to six days prior to city council meeting, again, like others have said, who knows how you can contact Howard or any city manager, because it's just not all that easy, not for either one involved. The three minutes, usually if you can say something in five minutes, you can probably say it better, more efficiently in three minutes. The no personal matters, absolutely, I do agree with that, but I also agree that you have the power to reject anybody you need to, that's getting ugly and personal. But one thing I read the other day that came to my mind tonight, and that's why I disagree with the six, in this situation, I was able to come in here and speak without planning to speak tonight, but someone said, I read an article where someone said, "Well, they're just getting in line with the rest of municipalities." Well, I don't think that's a good reason to do it. I think that's a good reason to tell the other municipalities, "Hey, maybe you need to look at us. We honor, cherish, and love our citizens enough to sit here and let them have this type of freedom, and be able to address us when they, if they come up the day before a meeting and decide they need to address council, they can do so. They don't have to get prior permission, they don't have to be screened, but they just have to be polite, professional, and appreciate everything y'all do, because we certainly do." But I am against this, but I think it puts an undue burden on people that may have an important need, and may need to address y'all. And another thing too is, I see just about every one of y'all at least some part of the day, or week, or month at least, and what I'll say, I think a whole lot more business probably gets done out there than does in here, but doesn't the time limitations. But the formalities are necessary, and I, please, don't make it too formal where people can't feel like they have the freedom and the opportunity to come and address this council. Thank you.
Thank you.
The perception of it was wrong. My thoughts were never to silence anybody, because I'm a person that believes in giving a person a fair shot. It was about, all about the attacks. We have talks about several ways of changing it. Y'all brought up some stuff tonight that we're not going to do, but I appreciate people coming to council speaking, and I think it was taken out of context, very much so.
Can I speak one more second?
Hold up. We were going to talk about it, we were going to study it, and like you say, we don't have to copy anybody else. But some of the members said, "Why not do it like the county?" People saying a whole lot of things, and then they change that back and forth. But just remember one thing, I am not trying to stop anybody from talking. So the perception out there in the street was not me, it was somebody else. Now, which one say you say?
I was going to mention one more thing too.
We could take a break, at least 6:00, 7:30, if we could take a break before we go back to that, to get out of, I mean, all that. Love to hear it.
I was going to say one more thing. The ordinances that y'all put together, these are designed to be things that last beyond your time here on council. Yes, I understand that this was something that was derived via a very personal situation, but these should be designed to last your tenure and the people who follow you on council. So when you think a long term, you want to make sure that you're making something, that you make an ordinance that does not just fit in one particular perspective, but making sure you're thinking for all future perspectives. And that's hard to do sometimes, but again, that's why you guys have paid the big bucks. And thank you for listening today.
Thank you. I'm putting my check.
There you go.
I'm putting my check, because I don't get to leave, so... Anyway, we'll take a little break, and then we'll come back for the rest I need. Thanks so much. 13 acres between Old Florence Road and Friendship Street, $127,626. Can I get a motion on that?
I approve the second reading of ordinance, 2019-04, relating to the sale of real estate known as parcel 165-00-02-010, consisting of 13 acres located between Delft Florence Road and Friendship Street for a sales price of $127,626.
I second. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, the proper ruling, second, that we use the second reading of the order, 2019-04, sale of real estate, 165-00-02-010, 13 acres between Old Florence Road and Friendship Street for $127,626. All in favor, motion up in side, aye? Mayors have the same right? Motion care. Okay, E, second reading of the order, 2019-05, the sale of real estate, 165-04-01-005, four acres between D Avenue and Sixth Street for $39,774. Can I get a motion on that?
I make a motion that we accept the second reading of the ordinance, 2019-05, sale of real estate, 165-04-01-005, four acres between D Avenue and Sixth Street for $39,774.
I second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, the proper ruling, and second, we receive the second reading of orders, 2019-05, the sale of real estate, 165-04-01-005, four acres between D Avenue and Sixth Street for $39,774. All in favor, or the motion up in side, aye? Mayors have the same right? Motion care. F, second reading of the order, 2019-06, the sale of real estate, 165-00-02-011, five acres, 323 Old Florence Road for $20,000. Can I get a motion on that?
I counsel on the behalf of make a motion that we accept second reading of the orders, 2019-06, sale of real estate, 165-00-02-411, five acres, 323 Old Florence Road for $20,000.
I second. Okay, any more discussion? It's the proper ruling, second, that we view the second reading of the order, 2019-06, sale of real estate, 165-00-02-011, five acres, 323 Old Florence Road for $20,000. All in favor, or the motion up in side, nobody said aye? Mayors have the same right? Motion care. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, upon the new business, okay, we finish with A. Ms. Rock, boards, commission appointments?
Yes, Mayor. We have several openings on the boards and commissions. There is one seat and one alternate seat available on the Historic Landmark Commission. There's one seat on the Board of Zoning Appeals and one seat on the Beautification Board. Ms. Karen Sprott has asked to be placed on the Beautification Board. She's a member of the Garden Club and participates regularly in the cleanup days and other Garden Club beautification efforts.
There's one, Ms. Karen Sprott?
Ms. Karen Sprott, that's the only question.
Right, so on the...
Beautification.
Beautification, okay.
I made the motion that we accept Ms. Carol Sprott's nomination to Karen Sprott to the Beautification Committee.
I second. Okay, so the proper ruling, second, we receive a Karen Sprott's beautification vote, all in favor, let it know a side, aye? Mayors have the same right? Motion care.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Okay, C, a resolution adoption of the 2015 International Building Code. You have that in your folder? Take the last one, the resolution of a tip. Y'all are going to sign it right quick. She got the book, she got the...
You have to explain it. The International Building Codes Council in the state of South Carolina adopt their National Building Code every few years and update ordinances as they relate to plumbing and electrical work and other facets of building codes. All we're doing is endorsing what's already been done and approved by the International Building Code Council in the state of South Carolina.
All in favor, can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the resolution adoption of 2015 International Building Code. I second.
Any discussion? It's the proper ruling, and second, that we receive the resolution adoption of 2015 International Building Code, all in favor, let it know a side, aye? Mayors have the same right? Motion care. Okay, number nine, I think I got all of them, didn't I? I believe I did. Any of my miss? Let's go back and forth. Okay, number nine, we receive a defamation department report, no actions needed. Number 10, thanks for all the remarks tonight, they were great. We know we were divided, and like I said before, there was never no intentions of stopping anybody from speaking. And like I said before, there was never no intentions of stopping anybody from speaking. That was a perception that somebody put out. In any way, it's all right with me.